...to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Parker will lead our roll call. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Rawls, who is joining us virtually. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Davis. For communications, we are joined by Mary Olivera, the President and CEO of the Whittaker Center for Science and the Arts on their 25th anniversary recognition. We will then move to courtesy of the floor, followed by the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on September 24, 2024. We have two reports of committees. The first report you will hear will be delivered by our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green, on the work session of October 1, 2024. And the second report will be shared by our Public Works Committee Chair, Chair Rodriguez, on the work session of October 1, 2024. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. We will then move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration is Resolution 49 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Next, Resolution 60 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Resolution 61 of 2024, which we will vote upon. And Resolution 62 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Resolution 63 of 2024 will move to the Public Safety Committee. Resolution 64 of 2024 will move to the Administration Committee. And Resolution 65 of 2024 will also move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Okay, any new business?
Yes, Madam President. I have an update for the final numbers for Hot Spot Saturdays. Yep, thank you.
Any other new business?
Yes, President Bowers. There will be a free transportation service for anyone who wants or needs a ride to the polls on November 5, and more information will be coming out about that.
Okay, any other new business? And then we will stand adjourned. So let's get started. The time is 6:01 PM. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rawls. Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
I'm present, I'm sorry if you couldn't hear me. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. As I mentioned during our caucus, Councilwoman Rawls is joining us virtually. And the invocation, she will lead the invocation this evening. Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, President Bowers. Good evening, everyone. I would like for us to just take a moment and keep the family of the man in our prayers who was struck by a car at a local toy store in Harrisburg. He lost his life. I'd also like us to keep in mind and in prayers anybody who's going through any hardships or have lost any family members this past week. Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Davis.
Let's stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its truly fatherland, the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. For communications this evening, we are joined by the President and CEO of the Whittaker Center for Science and the Arts, Ms. Mary Olivera. Oh, you can have a seat here if you wouldn't mind. You'll just have to move the microphone close to you when speaking.
I have to lower it.
She is joining us this evening in recognition of the Whittaker Center's 25th anniversary.
Indeed. First of all, thank you very much for this opportunity to come and address the council. Hard to believe it's been almost a year that I've been your neighbor across the street, and this is my first opportunity. But they keep me busy over there, that's for sure. I'm very excited to be serving in this role. I'm a local girl, growing up across the river on Erford Road, and went away for college and, like Dorothy, came back home to raise my own family in central Pennsylvania. And fun fact is that my husband and I moved back to central Pennsylvania the weekend that Whittaker Center opened its doors in 1999 with our six-month-old son. So I think fate had it in store for Whittaker and I to join forces at some point in the future. And it happened wonderfully last year when my predecessor returned back to the Pittsburgh area. And it was just perfect timing, both personally and professionally, for me to take on this amazing and yet challenging role of leading the Whittaker Center for Science and the Arts as it's continuing to come out of the pandemic and everything that an event venue had to go through as a shuttered venue during that time. Twenty-five years, it seems, goes by in the blink of an eye. Over that time, Whittaker Center has served as the hub for science, education, entertainment, and cultural enrichment for the Harrisburg city as well as the capital region. In today's world, we actually serve close to 10,000 students from 22 different counties surrounding Harrisburg proper. And we're so excited about reaching pre-pandemic numbers with welcoming students from around our city and within our city. Harrisburg School District itself sent us over 600 students in this past school year to come in and learn and explore and have fun and play and to really build those skills of curiosity and excitement about potential STEM careers. And they think they're there to just get a free pass out of school, but we're really teaching them as they embark upon their daily adventures with their agenda. In September of this year, we had our 25th anniversary as Honorable Bowers was able to join us for some of the events. And we really wanted to take an opportunity to pay homage to the 25 years that we've been a part of Harrisburg's landscape. And so we started off our week on September 9. Fortuitously, it was a Monday this year, and 9/9/99 is when Whittaker opened its doors. So we were able to celebrate with a wonderful luncheon for our founders. We celebrated with about 80 guests that joined us, including our 96-year-old founding board chair, Hal McGinnis, the former President and CEO of AMP Incorporated. We had our founding CEO and president, Dr. Thomas Stone, who came in from Wisconsin, and so many wonderful community leaders, unfortunately not to be shared, with a cornerstone of Harrisburg that really was who and why and how Whittaker came to be. And of course, that was our mayor, Reed, who certainly was a driving force behind so much in our city and Whittaker being one of those experiences that he led. And we had a wonderful week of events where we welcomed the community in. And we had a birthday bash on Tuesday, which was free admittance into Whittaker Center to really welcome and embrace our community and to introduce or reintroduce all the wonders that Whittaker has under its roof. And we had a fun day of movies in our Digital Cinema Center, where we played 1999 blockbuster films, again, for a vast array of audiences to encourage and entice families alike as well as our residents of the city to enjoy. We had a block party on Friday night with the local band, The Martini Brothers, who came and entertained a little over 200 guests. And thank you for the permits that we were able to get to shut down Third Street between Walnut and Market and have food vendors and drinks and entertainments. And it was really meant to welcome, you know, people and encourage and excite them about coming into downtown Harrisburg on a Friday night and let them know we can gather and we can have fun together, and it can be done in a safe manner. And it can be done where we can just enjoy each other's company and everything that is to be offered here in the city. And the week culminated with really the vision of what Whittaker Next wants to become and how we're building that foundation for the next 25 years and how we're setting it up to, again, open our doors and welcome and invite a very diverse and inclusive audience to enjoy what's happening within our doors, whether it's the science part in our traveling exhibits, whether it is exploring the different documentaries or the fun movies that we play in our digital cinema, and certainly bringing our theater back to life. Just last week, we announced for the first time in a decade that we have a season series of events and programs happening in our Sunoco Performance Theater, whether it's comedians or dance companies or singers. There's a little something for everyone happening at Whittaker. And we want to encourage not only our residents of the city, but our capital region to come downtown, have dinner, enjoy a show, bring the family, and be a spot that they feel like they can certainly spend time in. So that's what we're doing for our 25th anniversary. And I'm certainly happy to take any questions or...
Thank you very much. I'll open the floor. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions. No?
No comments? If I may, just briefly thank Honorable Jones for his letter of support. We're currently working on our file panel replacement as part of our safety and insurance of our guests having a great experience. And that letter of support, I'm sure, will go a long way toward us with our grant application. So I did want to acknowledge that and appreciate that, so...
Awesome, thank you.
I do have a small token, if I may, offer to all of you before I leave? Thank you.
A little commemorative coin of our 25th anniversary.
Thank you. We do have something for you before you go. Just bear with me a proclamation. I know you received many, so here's ours. The City of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, Office of City Council and Office of City Clerk. Proclamation. Whereas the City of Harrisburg applauds the Whittaker Center for Science and the Arts for their dedicated service to the City of Harrisburg for 25 years. And whereas on September 9, 1999, the Whittaker Center for Science and the Arts opened its doors, welcoming visitors to educate and inform them. And whereas the Whittaker Center for Science and the Arts has remained relevant over the past 25 years by providing access and opportunity to science, arts, entertainment, and cultural enrichment initiatives. And whereas the Whittaker Center for Science and the Arts is comprised of the UPMC Science Center, featuring hands-on exhibits, STEAM-based learning programs and exhibits, the Sunoco Performance Theater, a 700-seat theater which hosts nationally touring acts, local resident companies, jazz, classical, folk, opera, ballet, comedians, and musical theater, and the PNC Innovation Zone, which features a new purposeful gaming studio and the Select Medical Digital Cinema, a four-story tall screen showcasing 2D and 3D films. And whereas in 2023, the Whittaker Center had 140,000 visits from 80,000 visitors, over 200 schools and groups participated in educational activities, over 500 member families, 24,075 general admissions to the UPMC Science Center, 201 participants in Girl STEM workshops, 1,616 participants in Surgery Live and Surgery Live Virtual, 107 Whittaker on Wheels van visits to the community, 525 participants in Little Learners, 758 participants in Girl Scout badge workshops, and over 500 participants in summer camps. And now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council commends the Whittaker Center for Science and the Arts for their dedication to providing access to science, arts, entertainment, and cultural enrichment initiatives. And be it further proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council wishes to extend best wishes for a successful 25th anniversary celebration. Signed and attested in the City of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, Michael J. Parker, City Clerk, Danielle L. Bowers, Harrisburg City Council. We'd like to take a photo. But just a fun fact about me, I spent a lot of time in the Whittaker Center as a high schooler volunteering with the program called the Stars Program. It's not in existence anymore, but I'm hopeful that it will return because it was a really cool way to see science in action. It's nice to see that Whittaker on Wheels is still present. So yeah. Mm-hmm, I volunteered over 1,000 hours there, so... We'd like to take a photo, and thank you for coming. We will continue with our meeting agenda. Next, we have courtesy of the floor. So just a few housekeeping notes. Before we begin, please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper, and I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Hi, I'm Brian Kiesling. I live in Midtown. Good evening, council. I hope you've all been well. It's been a while. We've been organizing out in the community pretty intensively for the past few months. The reason I'm here tonight is to ask you for some guidance and assistance. As you may be aware, on Sunday, the community came together, hundreds of people congregated, and we planted 40,000 Palestinian flags along the river, each flag representing five people who have been murdered by the United States and Israel in the ongoing genocide. Now, this morning, the city removed those flags from the river. And I know that council has nothing to do with that. You're not getting blamed for that tonight. But I do want to ask for some guidance. When people discovered that the flags were coming down, dozens of community members contacted the city, particularly the mayor's office, to ask why it was happening, what could be done about it, is there a way to keep the memorial for the dead up? And people were given a lot of really contradictory answers. So some members of the community reported that they were told that the flags planted on public property needed to be down within 24 hours. Some people said that the city told them that the city and the mayor's office has nothing to do with taking down flags from public property, and they didn't know what people were talking about. Some people in the community said they were told the rain was a reason that the flags had to come down and that it might have something to do with litter. And other people were told that Solicitor Grover might be looking into legalities regarding flags. I'm not sure if that meant legalities with planting them, legalities with pulling them up. But basically, there's a lot of confusion in the community right now, on top of a lot of hurt, a lot of frustration with this memorial coming down, on top of the devastation of a year of genocide. So we are here tonight asking council what could be done to help us get some answers regarding what decision was made regarding the memorial, when it was made, who made the decision, if there's a statute that was used regarding pulling up the flags. If there is, is that statute uniformly applied to people? We understand that this is something that happened through the mayor's office, but frankly, I don't have confidence in the mayor or her office to be transparent about this because of the contradictory answers that were given to the community. So I'm hoping that council might be able to provide us some assistance so that people can understand what happened and how we can work together to move forward and commemorate the dead. So thank you very much for your time and for listening. And I'm not sure if this is a conversation to be had, if there's any answers that could come now, when we can talk about this, how we can find a way forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to offer a public comment?
I have a prompt, if that's all right. Hi, my name is Sarah Pinter. I live in Midtown Harrisburg. I am just following up on Brian's comments here. I really wanted to thank the council for the opportunity to speak today and to participate in this meeting and to make my voice heard. So first, let me express my sincere horror and disgust as we mark one year that the occupying forces started a genocidal campaign that has senselessly killed over 200,000 people. And I want to echo the pain and solidarity expressed by Brian and the other folks in this room whose feelings are known to me. The people of Harrisburg and our allies statewide took it upon themselves to express their grief and horror at this campaign of violence and mass murder and express unwavering solidarity with the Palestinian community and all of humanity. And while we must hold space for the outrage and righteous anger, our community came together to publicly memorialize Palestinians killed and still suffering at the hands of a genocidal regime in what was, I think, a beautiful act of nonviolent commemoration that brought our community together to grieve, to pray, and to hold each other dearer. And most importantly, to implore those that do not yet feel empowered to take a stand, to realize that they are welcome and wanted in the fight against the destruction of humanity. However, the conflicting messages received as to the reason for the city's opposition to the memorial raises questions about how we can grieve as a community. One such provided reason for the removal of the flags that Brian had mentioned was the question of litter. And on that note, I have lived in downtown Harrisburg for five years, and truly, I do love it here. It is a wonderful home and a beautiful community. But it's no secret to anyone present that this town has had a litter problem long before last Sunday. I have with me a bag of trash that I collected on the half-mile walk here. I'm an environmentalist, and I do certainly believe it's incumbent upon all of us to do our part in being good stewards of the earth in our communities. But I must question the logic of selectively enforcing ordinances against litter to remove what is clearly a memorial for lives ended, especially when that memorial was biodegradable and would return to the earth as Palestinian martyrs have returned to the earth, instead of spending that time, effort, and public funding picking up litter on every street and every park, floating through our waterways and plaguing each and every one of Harrisburg's vibrant neighborhoods, particularly when the vast majority of that litter has been plastic and will not degrade in the natural environment and leaches chemicals dangerous to our health and the health of the environment. And moreover, removing the memorial as a means of litter removal directly implies that this memorial amounts to garbage and a nuisance, which is deeply harmful and insulting to Palestinians across the diaspora and especially to those Arab-Americans here in central Pennsylvania who worry for the safety of their families abroad and whose homelands are threatened with death and destruction by the Zionist regime and those who see themselves reflected in the faces of Palestinians who, rest assured, are receiving loud and clear the message that their lives are disposable to those of us going about our business as usual here in the Imperial Corps. I recognize council does not oversee the enforcement of these ordinances which govern waste management and beautification of our wonderful city. But I call on the members of this body and everyone present to remember that we are all one community. We are all responsible for each other. We are all beholden unto each other. And this is most particularly true of those elected to represent us in office. As such, I very respectfully ask that you work together to protect and uplift our community and ensure that the city administration show equal dignity to all people and put an end to selective enforcement of ordinances as a means to advance or uphold specific political agendas. Thank you once again for the opportunity to speak in this meeting, and I end by urging you to call for a permanent ceasefire, total withdrawal of Israeli forces from occupied lands, and to support divestment and a complete arms embargo to end this genocidal campaign. Thank you very much, I yield my time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section?
How you doing? My name's Jamal Carter. I'm from the Uptown area. That's where I reside. It's just a lot of problems in our community and I refer to Uptown because there's like no places for our teenagers to go play at all. No places for my kids to go play, like inside. The Hill has Boys and Girls Club. They have the Allison Hill Center. Uptown don't have nothing. They have the YMCA, but they don't allow our kids to come in there. They have a open gym, but it's only for like people 40 and older, and that's on Mondays. They don't have an open gym for kids. They don't have no programs for the kids. When I was growing up, I could go to the Y, the Boys and Girls Club. I could just go anywhere. Now, it's just they can't go nowhere. So I think that's why we're having all the shootings and all the real crazy stuff because we have no guidance for our teenagers, nowhere, especially Uptown. The Hill got the South Side, and they got the Hill. On Berryhill Street, the other Boys and Girls Club in the back. We don't have nothing. And we used to have the Y, but they're not community-oriented no more. So I just want guidance to change that, please, and thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the left that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on September 24, 2024. Council members, are there any revisions to those minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to the reports of committees. The first committee report you will hear this evening will be delivered by Vice President Green on behalf of the Budget and Finance Committee on the work session of October 1, 2024. Vice President Green?
Thank you, President Bowers. During the work session of October 1, 2024, the Budget and Finance Committee discussed Resolution 60 of 2024, which is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to amend its professional service agreement with Meyer Dusu PC for the purpose of providing additional audit preparation services to the City of Harrisburg. We heard from our accounting manager, Mr. Brian McCutchenz, and he gave us an overview. Essentially, we'd be adding some professional services to this contract with the added cost of about $9,750, bringing the total to $30,250 to ensure that we were able to get our audit completed on time and get us caught up to ensure that we stay on track with our audits for the stadium. There were no questions from my colleagues, and so I recommend this for approval. I would ask my colleagues to support this, so thank you.
Thank you. The next committee report you will hear will be delivered by Chair Rodriguez on behalf of the Public Works Committee on the work session of October 1, 2024.
Thank you, Madam President. During the work session from October 1 of 2024, the Public Works Committee met to discuss a set of resolutions. The first of the pair was Resolution 61 of 2024. It was a resolution authorizing the submission of a Dauphin County local shared municipal grant application of up to $300,000 to fund the purchase and installation of a new salt dome for the Public Works facility. Joining us was Mr. John Watson from the Public Works Department. Questions were extremely minimal, and photos were shared with council to visualize the current state of the salt dome. Mr. Watson also stated the new dome was important for keeping the product as manufacturers intended for maximum benefit to the residents. The second resolution discussed was Resolution 62 of 2024. This was a resolution ratifying the United States Department of Transportation's "safe streets and roads for all grant applications" and authorizing the city $955,184 to implement traffic signal timing in the downtown area. Joining us was the current city engineer to respond to questions from council. Once again, questions were to a minimum, but the committee chair did encourage engineering to look into funding to bring the entire city up to date and not just a selective section of the city. I encourage my colleagues on council to support both resolutions from the committee. And that concludes the report from October 1 work session of the Public Works Committee. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. We do not have any ordinances for first reading, ordinances for amendment, or ordinances for final passage. We will move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution 49 of 2024. Mr. Parker, could you please... Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution appointing Connie Ziegler to serve on the Harrisburg Architectural Review Board of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-four? I have one comment. Following our meeting, Ms. Ziegler sent a series of rather aggressive emails. I think that's putting it mildly. And I'd just like to remind everyone that she volunteered for this position, and she says that she researched the vacancy on the city's website, but was very aggressive in terms of follow-up with the statement of financial interest and other information that was needed of her. So I hope that in the future, if someone volunteers for a role, that they do a little bit more research or aren't as combative as she became. And that lasted about a week following our council meeting. So as a result, I'm not really sure if Ms. Ziegler's interest is genuine. I do recognize that she has extensive expertise in the area. However, I did not find her follow-up to be necessary. So I will be voting no on this resolution. Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Ms. Rawls? We're currently having technical difficulties with Ms. Rawls at the moment. Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, no.
Ms. Bowers?
No.
So we have three yays and three nays. If we can get Councilwoman Rawls's vote in, that would break the tie.
Do you know if you could even hear that discussion that just happened?
It's Mr. Parker, and you're on speaker. And we just voted on Resolution forty-nine, appointing Connie Ziegler to serve on the Hasbro Architectural Review Board of the City of Harrisburg.
And we have a three-three tie, so you have the fortunate occasion of giving the deciding vote.
Oh, goodness. They're calling me back right on, right on now.
Right on it.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, alrighty. So your yes vote now passes. Your yes vote now passes Resolution forty-nine with a vote of four yays to three nays. All right? Thank you.
I'll try to keep getting on Zoom. Thank you for calling me, but it would not let me.
Alrighty. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Councilwoman Rawls, I don't think she heard. Yeah.
Okay. Resolution sixty of two thousand and twenty-four, Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution sixty of two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to amend its professional services agreement with Meyer Dusel PC for the purpose of providing additional audit preparation services to the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution sixty of two thousand and twenty-four? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
I am sorry, we're having technical difficulties, so I did not hear the resolution. My apologies.
No, that's certainly not your fault. Resolution sixty, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to amend its professional services agreement with Meyer Dusel PC for the purpose of providing additional audit preparation services to the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. That is a yes vote for me.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Wonderful. Resolution sixty passes unanimously with a vote of seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the submission of a Dauphin County Local Share Municipal Grant application of up to three thousand, I'm sorry, three hundred thousand dollars to fund the purchase and installation of a new salt dome for the public works facility.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-one of two thousand and twenty-four passes unanimously with a vote of seven yays to zero nays.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution sixty-two of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution sixty-two of two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution ratifying a United States Department of Transportation's safe streets and roads for all grant application and authorizing the City of Harrisburg to execute any agreements, forms, and documents related to the award of nine hundred fifty-five thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars to implement the traffic signal timing in the downtown area.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution sixty-two of two thousand and twenty-four?
Yes, President Bowers, I have a question. Is this grant specifically and only for the use of this technology for the downtown
That is what I believe the application and the award actually is for. It's twenty-five intersections that they're trying to modernize together, for lack of a better word.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
I strongly believe that there are other areas in the city that could utilize and could benefit from this technology, so my vote will be no tonight for this.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, wonderful. Okay, we just, we are ending up voting on Resolution sixty-two, which is a resolution ratifying the United States Department of Transportation's safe streets and roads for all grant application and authorizing the City of Harrisburg to execute any agreements, forms, and documents related to the award of nine hundred fifty-five thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars to implement traffic signal timing in the downtown area. And you are recorded as such. You are welcome. Therefore, we have a unanimous vote. I'm sorry, we have a vote of six yays to one nay. And Resolution sixty-two passes.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with the Research Foundation of the City University of New York on behalf of the National Network for Safe Communities at John Jay College to provide consulting and training services to support the group Violence Intervention Program.
Thank you. Resolution sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-four will move to the Public Safety Committee. Next, we have Resolution sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution of the City of Harrisburg to authorize the filing of a statement of revival of the Cumberland-Dauphin-Harrisburg Transit Authority, also known as Capital Area Transit Authority pursuant to the Municipalities Authorities Act, to extend its term of existence for a period of not to exceed fifty years.
Thank you. Resolution sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-four will move to the Administration Committee. Our final resolution this evening is Resolution sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a multi-year agreement with HIRA Property Registry LLC to register for closed properties within the city.
Thank you. Resolution sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-four will also move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Okay, I have one order of old business. I forgot, but since we took action on Resolution forty-nine, I wanted to provide an update on Resolution forty-four of two thousand and twenty-four. That was a resolution appointing Ms. Elaine Barber to serve on the Board of Directors of Capitol Region Water, a municipal authority. Following our work session, Ms. Barber sent an email notifying Mayor Williams that she appreciated the consideration, but she has decided not to accept the position. After the council meeting and questions, she took a second look at the role, and she decided that the time commitment and responsibilities are a little bit more than she expected. So I'm not sure if we can expect another individual to be presented before us or not, but I did want to let everyone know the status of that resolution. New business, Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to update my colleagues here on council and appreciate all of their support for Hot Spot Saturdays. Within the first three years, eighteen Saturdays, we were able to remove one hundred and fifty tons of illegal waste and just litter from the City of Harrisburg. So we just got those dates and numbers updated Monday from the Department of Public Works. So I will be connecting with Madam President to see if we can do like an end-of-year summary as we usually do and have everyone that was involved. But just like to thank my colleagues here on council for their support with this initiative. And also, before the Holiday Parade, Saturday, November twenty-third, stop by the PA Farm Show for Civics and Meat, which is an engagement with all different local and state and federal public officials, explaining what it is that they do, their positions, how to file a grievance, et cetera. It will be in a career kind of development style with different tables and vendors. So I encourage all to come. It's a free event from ten to twelve, and then enjoy the Holiday Parade shortly after.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, President Bowers. The contact information for the free rides to the polls, "No Vote Left Behind" is the logo and topic. On behalf of At Home Personal Care, they are offering free rides. There is a registration requirement, and anyone can email info@athomepersonalcare.us or call seven one seven eight eight nine six one one three to register. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I just wanted to have, take this moment to respond to Brian and everyone that was over there today and the young lady that spoke. You know, you guys have my deepest sympathies to what you're enduring. I know this date is not one that you would like to celebrate, but you know, I stand with you guys in fighting for what's right, and I hope that you guys aren't being targeted when you put your flags down. You gave a great example of picking up that trash. We have a lot of things that are memorialized inside of the communities in Harrisburg and the city that are not removed, this graffiti and things like that. So I just hope and pray that you guys aren't being targeted, and hopefully, we could find a resolve and get you some answers. And I just wanted to say, I'm sorry for everything that you guys are going through, and I do stand with you guys with a ceasefire, so I hope there is some type of resolve at the end of the day when this is all through. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the time is six forty-four PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.